To communicate with her to see if she's having any problems logging in, but no response. So. So, Beck, if you want to hit the record, just let me know we're recording and.
All right, we're good to go. We are recording.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and call this special call board meeting of the Chatham County Board of Education on January 5th, 2021 to order. Mr. Patrick, would you mind leading us in a moment of silence in the pledge, please? We can stand, I guess. I'm sorry, don't have a flag to look to, so.
I don't mind at all.
Thank you.
Have a moment of silence. You join in the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Ms. Cindy, if you would, since we'll be voting on a couple of matters tonight, if you would take role for the record, please.
Yes. Gillum? Patrick?
Yes.
Ray?
Here.
Gubton?
Here.
Lou Allen?
Present.
Ryson?
Present. All right, I'll declare we have a quorum to conduct business. If there's no objection, I'm going to suggest that we reverse items five and six. Take up the storage building as item five and take up the FF-CRA matter as item six. I know we've got some guests joining with us tonight, and most of them are tuning in in regards to the storage building. So we'll go ahead and take that up and give them the option of if they want to after we finish with that item. Any objection from rest of the board?
None here.
No.
Hearing none, we'll, we'll take up the storage building. So let me give a little background first before we get Alan to chime in and kind of tell us where we are. Hopefully, you received today a copy of the proposed MOU that's been being negotiated or put together by respective attorneys for the board and the county. I don't know if you had a chance to digest that or not, but that sort of sets out the, the terms. As you know, this is something that we've been kind of going back and forth on for, I don't know, about a month or so now. And I think through not only the board's efforts as a whole, but Dr. Beck and I have been working with the mayor and the sheriff and other persons involved with the project in trying to get the terms, I guess, negotiated or hashed out to come to an understanding of how we want to proceed with this, with the building swap and the land swap. So over the holiday, I think we, we had a conversation before the holiday, Dr. Beck, the mayor, and myself, and discussed some of the terms both sides were, were interested in and just trying to make sure we could be on the same page before we started reducing those items to writing. So out of that, we have, has been born this MOU. I would probably say let's suspend with our normal procedure of asking for a motion on the item because, like I say, you've, you've only received all of this information recently, and there may be a lot of questions that you have or some things that need to be answered before you could even formulate a motion. So if there's no objection, we'll, we'll just sort of go ahead and begin to talk about where we're at with the, with the negotiation. So I guess you can, and we can, we can go through this memorandum of understanding and let Alan outline it. But basically, the core of our, the core of what we've negotiated, Dr. Beck and I, with the county is to do the building swap and, you know, exchange our current building for a building 40 feet by 50 feet with a concrete slab on a location on our current property that of our choosing that we wanted to replace the current type shelving that we had, which was, I think, wood shelving with steel shelving in our new building. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We wanted to ask if the county would be willing to move us from our current building to our new building when it was complete, and also to work out an agreement in regards to a temporary easement to allow the sheriff's department access from, I think that's Vine Street back there, if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
Yeah. Access to the back of the Tucker Emerson building for the purposes of either getting large vehicles in and out of there or things, as you know, if you're familiar with the Tucker Emerson building, there's not a lot of clearance on either side of the building. So large, large equipment and that type of thing. They wanted to be able to have the ability to, and I think it'll also give the construction easier access to, to get in and out of there with pouring concrete and erecting the building. So out of those core terms, there were, you know, of course, there were a few things associated with each of those that we were, we were trying to dot the I and cross the T zone. But with all that said, that has been reduced to the, you know, we, we came to a core agreement and then instructed Mr. Woods to begin to negotiate or begin to draft along with Mr. Bly, the attorney for the county, an agreement that will, I guess, memorialize our understanding of what each party is to do. And then, so one thing that will come out of that, of course, is allowing, because the, and the mayor can speak to this, as I understand it, that they're ready to go to begin to try and pour the slab and begin erection of the building. So before any work began or anything like that, we wanted to try to have an understanding of, of terms. I know also, I think, Sheriff, you can correct me if I'm wrong as well. They, they want to go ahead and begin to erect some fencing associated with, with the property too. So before anything began, we wanted to at least get our understanding reduced to writing. And then, of course, we're going to have to continue to formalize a few things and follow up with, of course, the drafting of the deed and a few other things associated with our memorandum of understanding. So that is what we're dealing with in a nutshell. What may be helpful to you is along with that draft of the memorandum of understanding as an exhibit A is a copy of the survey that was performed. No, my mind's escaping me right now. There's a copy of the survey from Mr. Chandler that I think is attached to it that basically shows you the area that we are talking about, which not only includes the footprint or the area directly around where the current building is, but also includes, as we've discussed, a little bit of property that is, you're facing our storage building out to the right, basically extends all the way over to the property line or the, that drainage ditch in between our property and the adjacent property. So does, does everybody have that attached to their draft? Does everybody have this?
I'm, I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
It, it was an attachment of the email I sent you all, well, both the emails I sent you all earlier today.
Right. I think it's referenced in exhibit A in the agreement. Okay. Well, just if you look at that, you can see, you can see the current building, where it sits, and I think the total acreage associated with this swap is 0.51 acres, if I'm reading that correctly. I believe that's correct. So, so that's what, that's what we're talking about, and that's what's at issue. So Alan, if you want to follow up on that, I, I think I've hit the core of history of, you know, kind of how we started and how we got to this point. So at this point, I guess, what the mayor of the county is asking for us to go ahead and approve this memorandum of understanding and, and the Board of Education to authorize Dr. Beck or myself to sign off of, on this. And then I guess it will be submitted to the county commission for approval and signature. And from that point on, as soon as, I guess, that is obtained, then we, the county intends to, to go ahead and begin to perform under that MOU as we, you know, while we get the other legalities associated with it. Did I, did I synopsize it correctly, Mayor, in your, in your eyes?
Yes, sir. I think you did a very good job.
Okay. So.
I found it.
Oh, good.
Got it.
All right, good. So I can, we can open it up for some questions now, or Alan, if you kind of want to maybe run through the MOU first, just hit the highlights, and then we can open it up for questions from board members after that.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd be happy. I think Chairman Reiser's summary is, is thorough and tells you where we stand in this transaction. A few things, I'll just add a couple of additional things because I know there were other questions and issues regarding this transaction that came up at prior meetings. Three things I just want to identify. First, I know there was a question at an earlier meeting about any of our property that's still in the storage shed. Could we get the county to agree to move it? They, they've agreed to that. Second, there was a question, I think, a few meetings ago regarding any fencing that the sheriff may want to erect. They want to go ahead and put up the fencing immediately. If we sign this agreement, this is really just the terms of a contract that Mr. Bly and I will finalize. That'll be forthcoming. But I think the sheriff intends to go ahead and put up fencing upon the signing of this agreement. They have agreed to put, and I'll find the exact language. Apologize. The, it's in section six where we're agreeing that they can go ahead and put up fencing. That will include a visual screen. In other words, I think we talked about before, we didn't want any fencing to appear too industrial. This will be chain link fencing, is my understanding, but they're going to put a screen behind it so it doesn't look like there, anyone's driving through some sort of industrial zone. So it'll still look good. The final issue, I know we talked about it at a couple of meetings, was simply the nature of the easement. And to be clear, I believe we worked out with the county that the access easement is temporary. It's not permanent. We want to maintain, as the board, the flexibility if we're going to develop this property in the future for some different use than it's being used for now, to take back that part of the property where the easement is. We need that for our development. Therefore, in section four of this proposed agreement, you'll see that there's two conditions that if met, will automatically terminate the easement. The first is if the county ends up conveying the, the property to a third party. If they sell it to someone in the future or for whatever reason, the easement will automatically expire. The second is if we notify them with 90 days written notice of a definitive development plan that we're going to use for redevelop that property where the easement is, that will also cause the easement to expire. It's my understanding from talking to Dr. Beck that we don't have any intention of doing that anytime soon. And I've conveyed that to the county's attorney, but we want to maintain that flexibility for many years down the road. And this part of the agreement does that. I think Mr. Reiser already hit all the other highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Alan, if you would, touch on paragraph three in regards to the shelving. And I know as a board, we had talked about just upgrading the shelving that would go in the building just to accommodate more weight or possibly more boxes or more storage. Kind of, kind of touch on paragraph three, how, how we're going to handle that, how we're going to, what we're proposing to handle that.
With regards to the shelving, there were some back and forth between us and the county about the best way to address the existing shelving. I think it's my understanding is some of it's actually already been removed, and the fact that the new shed they're building for us is going to be bigger than the existing shed. So what we ultimately agreed upon is that the county is going to compensate the board for the actual value of the existing shelving, which comes out to just under $6,600. Then after that, we, as a board, have the option of whatever new shelving we want to buy, whatever material, we're assuming it's going to be metal, but whatever type of material, however much we want, the county has then agreed that it will, the county at its cost will assemble and install that new shelving in the new storage building once it's completed.
May, may I jump in a second? And certainly Sheriff Breedlove, you can join me as well. Sheriff Breedlove and Under Sheriff Binkley and I and Emily met at the storage unit today. And Sheriff, I'm sorry, Under Sheriff Binkley had found some metal shelf that will accommodate up to 2,000 pounds per unit. And today, he was going to measure to see how much of that. So we already have shelving picked out that will fit and accommodate our needs. And so he was measuring to get a cost, and that's how he came up with that cost, was the size of the shelves that we have right now in terms of what they cost in the store. That's where that cost came from. So just that, just not a random, but just a true, based on, here's the, the amount of shelving we need, and this is the cost of it.
Dr. Beck, quick question to follow up on that. Have you, have you and Cal and everybody at Central Office decided on the, where you want the footprint of the new building to be, just to give the board an idea of while they're looking at this, where, where it might be?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm answering a question. Doctor David, can you repeat?
Oh, I was, I was just asking, have you, has the Central Office decided on an approximate area where you want the construction of the new building to go, just as, as far as its orientation to the, you know, to the, to the current building, I guess?
Yes. And Dr. Watson, haven't you met with Edwin to show him exactly where we are considering putting it?
Yes, Edwin and Cal and myself, and I think Detective, Detective Binkley was out there. Yes.
Sheriff, Under Sheriff Binkley. So yes, Edwin, who is going to build it, he's, we've met, he knows exactly where to put it.
Okay. And as far as the, the, just to satisfy my own curiosity, as far as the design of it, will it have like a bay door access? And then, I guess, regular door access, right?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. Sheriff, do you have anything you want to add to that before I open it up to the board for questions in, in terms of the agreement?
No, I think we have everything ironed out, and it's, it's a go.
All right. Mayor, anything further you want to add before we open it up for questions or comments?
No, Chairman Reisner, I think everything's been covered very well. I will add, it's, it's been great working with Dr. Beck and you at times on trying to get this hammered out to, to keep them on track. So I think they're ready to move by the end of January into their building. So, so as long as this can come along right behind it, we're in pretty good shape, and we appreciate y'all working with us on this.
Okay, great. All right. So at this time, let's open up the floor for questions. We'll, we'll, we'll entertain a motion here shortly. Let's just make sure we get all of your inquiry, all of your questions, concerns answered before we move to that step. Any questions from board members about the MOU? I'm, I'm looking. So raise your hand if I'm missing you. Christina?
I have a question. It's more so about in regards to the fencing and keeping the appearance of that area, once it's utilized by the sheriff's department. I know we have made some discussions about whether or not they were wanting to put impounded vehicles or kind of the intent for how much will be visible through that fencing. We don't want it being right in our back door to be any sort of an eyesore.
Right. The, the only, the only type of vehicles we'll have back there will be our vehicles, our, our patrol vehicles and the vehicles that we use to cover operations. There will be no impounded vehicles unless it's a vehicle that we, we will bring over to put into the garage area to process. And that will be the only time. We have an offsite place in which we, we store all seized vehicles. So there, we're not going to, we're not going to junk up our new home with the, you know, with seized vehicles. It'll be just mainly patrol vehicles.
Thank you.
Yeah. And will the, the, is the fencing, what is it, eight foot? Would it be eight foot with, what's the style of that, Sheriff? Just so we can get a idea.
Yes, sir. It's, it's a six foot.
Six foot.
Perimeter fencing, but there, there'll be a cover that will, will surround it in which you won't, unless you're higher than six foot. It's just basically to, to shield everyone else from around it, from having, you know, to look in and see cars or whatever. So it's, it, it'll be done very tastefully and professionally.
Okay, right. Does that answer your question?
And I suppose, just, just to clarify as well, I'm sure it's not part of your intentions, but clearly something the board would like to know. It's not topped with barbed wire or razor wire or something. Okay.
Oh, none, none of that. We purposely, we, we have, we'll have plenty of cameras and all that around where we, we'll be able to see someone coming over the fence if they're, if they're that stupid to do that. But we hope not. Just depends on next door, how drunk they get.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Ray.
Maybe for Alan. I, I understand what the sheriff's saying, and I take him at his word, but he won't be the last sheriff in Chatham County. So what happens when somebody else comes along and decides to use that property differently?
Um, there is no restriction on how the property is used. I mean, at least not in this agreement. And, you know, if we wanted to put a restriction on that, obviously, we need to, we need to negotiate that, you know, before we sign an agreement, but that would ultimately go in the deed. I mean, let me also add, obviously, subject to any zoning, that, that may limit the use, but there, there's nothing in this agreement that dictates or limits the use of the property.
Because I'm, I'm perfectly fine with the description of use now, but I'm a little wary of just open access, no restriction in the future. Because again, I take Sheriff Breedlove at his word, but, you know, he won't be the last sheriff in Chatham County.
Yeah, I, I think that with, with the, the property there is, is so limited in terms of space that I, I can't see somebody when I'm gone, bringing in a bunch of junk cars. I hope not at least, but I think there'd be enough pressure on any future sheriff to not do that. And I think any future sheriff would take care of, of the property there and at least maintain it where it's, you know, where it's appeasable to the eye and all that. Hope so anyway, but.
Sheriff, do you currently have a facility or a place where you current, where you currently take impounded vehicles or vehicles that are being kept for evidentiary purposes or investigation or things like that? I mean.
Yes, sir. We, we've been very lucky. We've had Doodle Bowman, who owns Bowman's Record Service, to allow us a, a certain area to keep vehicles both seized and, and secured. So with that, even if we have to bring a vehicle down there to, to the Tucker Emerson behind it to process it, it, it won't stay there. You know, we'll process and then we'll take it right back to, to Doodle Bowman's. But right now, we're very lucky to have, he's been very gracious to, to, you know, allow us, and it's out of sight and all that. So I hope we'll have that for, for, you know, quite some time, even after my, my administration. And we should. It's all about maintaining a really healthy relationship, business relationship, and also, that's where we have it right now. If that fire ever falls through, hopefully, we'll have maybe some other county property. I just can't see junking up this area with seized vehicles. There's just literally, there's not enough room, for one thing, but it's just not a, it's not a good, it's not a good neighbor practice to do something like that.
All right. You have any other questions or comments, Mr. Ray? No? Okay. All right. Mr. Patrick? Mr. Patrick, go ahead.
I think that the MOU as written is thorough enough and also gives us the flexibility because we can't foresee all extensives in the future. And yes, we may have to negotiate things as things change. So I'm excited that Sheriff Breedlove will be able to use that building. He'll be a good neighbor, having, having us right there by the Ashton City Elementary. I think that's a good thing. I really appreciate what David and Dr. Beck and, and all the county officials have done as we tried to make the best situation for all the citizens in this county.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I give everybody an opportunity. John, Mr. Low, I just see the top of your head, so I don't know if you have any comments.
The lack of, no, no, I, I'm good. This is, I know there's been a lot of work in on this, and the sheriff's department's going to be a great neighbor. And I think some of the initial, not, I wouldn't call them concerns, but questions I have have been vetted. So I'm good to go, Mr. Ray.
Okay, thank you. And did we lose James? I don't, I don't see him on anymore.
He's on. He's on. James, I think you're muted.
I was muted.
There you go.
Y'all didn't need to hear all the background noise going on around here.
I, I just wanted to make sure, James, you didn't have any comments or questions or concerns. So give everybody an opportunity to be heard.
No, no, I'm, I'm satisfied with it. I did have a very similar concern as Mr. Ray had, but I think, I think that was kind of clarified up just a little bit with the idea of needing to be good neighbors and Sheriff Breedlove, with what he said, just really did make a whole lot of good sense. So, so I'm, I'm pretty satisfied.
Okay. Dr. Beck, do you have anything further?
No, I would defer to you and Alan and Attorney Mr. Bly in terms of making sure that this, we feel like this is a good legal document. I would totally agree with Mr. Ray in that, you know, Sheriff Breedlove, we don't ever want to see you leave, but, but I know you got to count down. And, you know, when you do, we just would want to make sure that the new sheriff, and, and of course, Mayor McCarthy, you could help with this. You know, doesn't come and put up barbed wire and things like that. We want it to look as nice as it possibly can. And so we're just going to all hold each other accountable professionally in this county to make sure that the tenets of this original agreement are held in place.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything further from board members, local officials? All right. Hearing or seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the memorandum of understanding as presented with exhibit A.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Patrick?
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding as written, except for maybe in the first line where it says January 2020, but to change that to 2021.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the MOU with corrected dates, of course, as presented with exhibit A. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I'll second, Mr. Ray seconds that. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on that before we take a voice vote? All right, hearing none. Ms. Cindy, if you would, please.
Captain?
Yes.
Lou Allen?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Patrick?
Patrick.
Yeah, yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Dix chess.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. So that's good. So we'll, we'll put it back into the hands of Mr. Woods and Mr. Bly to get, uh, to get the agreement, uh, prepared for signature and, um, we'll get it signed. And I guess next step, uh, Mr. Mayor, you'll be presenting that to the commission.
We go with the commission the fourth Monday of this month and, and hopefully wrap it up. Then we'll be back in the larger hands, finish out all the deed work and all that good stuff. We'll get to work on it. So make it happen. Thanks again for all of y'all doing that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
This is a suggestion, I guess, for, for Mayor McCarver and Dr. Beck with Cal and I'll link Cal's on here. If we could, uh, at, at least get that building stubbed for water. If Cal could work with Edwin and stub that for water, because we're gonna pour a slab. Uh, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to pour a slab. And then if we ever need water there, you know, have to come back and take up concrete. You know, if we need to pay for the, you know, that shouldn't be, you know, a couple hundred dollars, I wouldn't think to stub it for water. And then we could hook water up later on if we wanted to.
Okay. We'll definitely work on that, Mr. Ray. We'll get to work on that. Shouldn't be a hard, hard thing to add to the project.
All right. I think that concludes, uh, that item. Uh, thank you, uh, everyone who is on for that. Uh, you're certainly welcome to stay with us if you want, but if not, we'll understand if you want to leave our meeting and, uh, we're gonna move on to our next item. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mike.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, um, I want to give you a little background. I certainly have, um, Dr. Watson and Wendy Cox, who attended, uh, an hour-long webinar and they can also add, I'll tell you everything I know about FF-CRA. That was the federal law that was created in regards to COVID and allowing employees for various reasons to have an additional ten days of leave. It was an unfunded mandate and we were all required to comply. It sunsetted December thirty-first. And so, um, we wanted to think about and get your approval and have you vote on what do we want to do with this? Certainly, we want to, it, it from our perspective, and I think probably from your, your perspective as well, uh, we want to think of our employees first. You know, um, what this means is, um, we have three choices really, and our three choices are we can reset and say, starting January first, that everybody has ten days again, whether you've taken them or not, a total reset. The second choice is we can extend the leave for those that have not used it. And those that have used their ten days, then they, uh, could always go to their sick days. What, what I fear for that is if they've already, if they don't have any more, uh, particularly teachers and ones that have little kids, they, they use a lot of their sick days and, uh, they might end up going without pay. And certainly we don't want that to happen. The third choice is do nothing and just to say it's over. It is our recommendation and I've written a policy for you to look at to reset it. And so I'm going to share my screen and just show you all the policy. I sent it to you, but I will share the screen. And please forgive me, I reached out to Cindy and I said, Cindy, I don't have the ability to change a policy. I don't have the template. And y'all, if you could see our office right now, it is a disaster, um, with all the mold mitigation. And so I did my best just to create something that would be in lieu. And when we get back in our office, which we hope will be by the nineteenth, we can put this on the correct, um, template. But basically, one of the things they said in the webinar was do not refer to this or have anything in a policy that says FF-CRA, that that law is done and that we are not to use that. So they recommended just using term COVID twenty-one. And so that's how we named this. Uh, they also recommended that we just use the same policy number, uh, that is the FF-CRA. Wendy talked to TSBA today and they said they were not going to be making any recommendations. They were not going to be giving any, um, policies for us to, to use because every district had all these decisions to make. And it was up to each district, which is why I just took a hand in writing this. And so basically what I, um, said here, well, I took, I, I went to the old policy. Let's see if I can get this down. I don't even know how to make it go down. Hang on just a second. There we go. Um, again, that employees are entitled to up to two weeks of paid sick leave. And I also, I'm sorry, let me go back up here. I think I believe I said this policy will be in effect from January first, two thousand and twenty-one until June thirtieth. And that was another recommendation they had because there are, while the majority of our employees, um, finish up in May, we do have all the administrators. They work all the way through the summer. And so I don't know that, you know, hopefully we're gonna be able to get these vaccines and this will kind of be a moot point. But anyway, um, the paid sick leave, again, would reset. Employees would be entitled to up to two weeks of paid sick leave because the employee number one is subject to a federal, state or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID nineteen. And so that would be from the health department, obviously. Or number two, it comes from us based on our contact tracing, has been advised by a healthcare provider. That would more or less be us and our nurses, is experiencing COVID nineteen symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis. And that's important because that, what that says right there is we're gonna require you to go get a test. And number four, is caring for an individual subject to or advised to quarantine or isolated due to COVID nineteen. The individual must be someone who lives within the same household. This paid leave may be taken if there's work available for the employee to complete. In other words, if we were just to close down like we did last spring, then, then there would be no extra pay that would accrue. Such leave is in addition to any paid leave an employee may already be entitled to existing sick leave. Uh, employees are not required to exhaust any other paid leave benefit in order to utilize this. This would be the first out of the gate. If they get, if they fall under these four categories, this is what we would use first. And it is available to all full-time Chatham County School District employees. Now, and, uh, in looking and trying to do a little bit of research in regards to this, right now, we have had, we have a little over eight hundred employees in the school district. And approximately fifty have used these, the FF-CRA leave to the tune of, we've spent about forty-five thousand dollars. So when you look at this, we feel like it's not very much. We haven't had that many people that have used it in relation to our entire, uh, all, all the employees. Um, we, we don't feel like anybody's taking advantage of, of it. And we also have the safeguards in place to make sure that that doesn't happen. So it is our, that policy is our recommendation to really do the number one, which is to do a reset with adding ten days for all employees, whether they have used the other ones or not. For example, and what, and our thinking about this, we've had a lot of conversations about this. Our thinking about this was, for example, at Pleasant View Elementary, uh, their daycare had a really big exposure and had to close down. And as a result of it, uh, a whole lot of our teachers had to take COVID leave because their childcare was not available because of COVID. So they've already exhausted that leave, but they themselves might have never gotten COVID. And what if they ended up getting it in January, February, they wouldn't have anything to fall back on. I know that when our children were little, we never had any sick days that accrued. And I don't know, Christina, maybe you could, you know, we, we, the kids are little, they're sick all the time. You're constantly having to take off and take care of the kids and, and, and so a lot of these younger staff, they don't have large amounts of sick leave available to them. Teachers have a sick bank that's available to them, but nobody else does. The teacher aides don't, the bus drivers don't. And so this is a way we feel like we can protect all of our staff. We feel like that we can afford it based on what has happened so far. And we're also thinking, we hope the large majority of our staff is gonna get a vaccine. We've been moved up and it, we've been told that we should get the first round of the vaccine at the, the very first of February. And then the second round is also in February. So I'm hoping the large majority will get this and that will make most of this a moot point. So with that, I will open it up to questions. Um, again, Dr. Watson and Wendy did an entire webinar yesterday on this. These are the recommendations, but they might have answers to questions I don't have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beck. Um, I'm looking for hands to see if, uh, anyone's has any particular questions. Yes, James.
Okay, so my question is, because it mentions full-time employees, but we have quite a few bus drivers that work, go into work every day, twice a day, um, that, uh, um, that they're, they're considered part-time employees. Why can't we extend this out to them also? The, because, I mean, you know, they struggle with, uh, they struggle with, with a much smaller paycheck um, as it is. And, uh, I would, I would honestly like to see this extended to those part-time employees as well, because they get sick just like everybody else does. And not just necessarily the bus drivers, they're just the ones that I'm familiar with, that I know of, that, uh, that do come into work every single day. For their paycheck. They just don't work a four, eight hours a day to be considered full-time employees.
Um, I, I would refer this to Dr. Watson, um, and, and, and Cal in regards to this. I have no objection. I will tell you, according to the webinar yesterday, they suggested doing it for full-time employees. But if, if that is something you would like us to add, we can certainly make a change. Um, Dr. Watson and Cal, I would also ask you to weigh in.
So I will, I did not attend that webinar. Um, I know Dr. Watson did, so she can speak to what went on that meeting. But as a supervisor and a department head, I want my people to be covered. Every employee that I have, whether they're a teacher's, whether they're a bus assistant, or whether they're a driver or they're administrators, it doesn't matter to me. Um, they're all part of my department family and, and I think we should take care of them. So that's, that's my take on it.
I mean, you know, I, I think that if our intention is to take care of people and employees, then I certainly would agree with you, James, that we, we should and could add them.
I've had, I've had several drivers contract, uh, the COVID. So I've had a lot of them over this last, over this first semester that, that I've had. And, and I'll be honest, I have some that are currently right now that they're gonna be okay by the time we go back to school. But if we were driving today, they'd be out because they, they're sick. Um, so it's real important to me, um, and I, I won't say anymore. That's it.
I'm assuming.
We can easily change that in the policy and just put to all employees, James.
Okay, um, just, just to piggyback off of what Cal just said, can, can y'all hear me? Did I think it's off you? Okay, to piggyback off of what Cal just said, you know, honestly, I, our bus drivers are in a much closer confined space than our teachers are. They're exposed. I, I know that they're wearing their masks and we're, we're doing everything. Everybody's supposed to be wearing the mask and, and doing everything that we can to social distance. But there's really no such thing as social distancing when you climb inside of that school bus. Uh, it's, it's thirty-five degrees outside, the windows are up, um, it's just not strongly ventilated. And our drivers are exposed. Um, they're exposed to these children. I, I really think that, that, and I think it's, I, I'm not sure. Y'all know the numbers. The, the, when you start adding in the part-time drivers, the aides, uh, everyone like that, the number climbs on up there and it's quite a few people. So I would like to see that added.
Mr. Low.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just, just real quick, not a question, just a comment. Um, I completely agree with James and Cal. Um, I think if we're gonna go down this direction, we need to cover all employees. And my comment about, you know, the, the total reset, um, we need to show our employees that we care. And when it all boils down to it, we need to do the right thing and this is the right thing. We need to protect our staff with precautions and also financially. And this is protecting them in, in both areas if they have, whether they have to care for a loved one or for themselves. So with all that said down, when it, when it's all said and done, in my opinion, this is the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Patrick? Go ahead, Mr. Patrick.
Well, I would, I was very, I was very pleased with only fifty teachers using that, you know, that's less than ten percent. I, I would, I would have thought it was higher. And the forty-five thousand dollars, um, you know, that's, that's, uh, reasonable. I, I need some more information, you know, did the other, the part-timers, the nutrition staff, the bus drivers and custodian, um, were they, were they out at a certain, about ten percent at the same amount?
Yes, they were included in that fifty. And so, um, when I talked to Jewel today, I said, how many? Um, and they were included in the fifty.
Okay. And one more question. Um, did, and this is probably Dr. Watson, that forty-five thousand that we spent on this, was some of that covered by the, the CARES Act? And do you anticipate that we'll have funds, similar funds coming from the other that we can cover such a, a situation like we have?
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Can you hear? Uh, part of the CARES Act, I only think fifteen thousand is set aside for substitutes. But I think those were specifically set aside for special education substitutes. Dr. Beck can correct me if I'm wrong on the CARES, uh, distribution. Now, the new funding, uh, what those appropriations look like for substitutes and reimbursement, I don't know yet.
I believe, Dr. Watson, if I remember correctly, um, it was for all substitutes. We knew that our sub-line item that was gonna be worse this year because of people that were sick. And so I think it, I don't think it had a stipulation in regards to what kind of subs. Certainly our sub, it's a double-edged sword, um, in that there aren't very many subs this year, which has been one of our big problems. And so, um, we haven't been able to, not that we won't use probably all that, but that has been a problem in terms of it's been a blessing and a curse, you know, blessing money-wise, um, but it's been a curse in terms of trying to provide supervision, um, for, to keep schools going. Alan.
I was just going to add, Mr. Patrick, to, for your benefit. I don't think it would be realistic to expect any additional monies to help fund this, uh, just because at the end of the year, uh, the federal government did actually provide an opportunity for all employers to extend the FF-CRA benefits. And they were giving them a tax break in return, but that, you know, the tax benefit doesn't accrue to public employees or public enterprises such as the school system. You know, there's, from everything I've read, there's no, and there's no motivation apparently to provide any additional funding for those type of mandates or for these type of policies other than that tax break they've already provided.
Well, and when I looked through the PowerPoint from the webinar, they were strongly encouraging districts not to do this because of the financial impact, but I just totally disagree. You know, I, I feel like we have to take care of our people. Um, and, 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 and we can't just say we don't have the money for this. I mean, to me, I, I just think we have to do this. And I also think, I'm, I mean, I truly think that, um, with the vaccine coming in February, I mean, I, I just don't think, y'all know me, I'm, I'm a perpetual Pollyanna. Uh, but I just don't think that financial impact is gonna be that big, um, this second semester with the availability of the vaccine.
Dr. Beck, you said forty-five thousand dollars. Wh- what was that in? How did those cost? How were they actually, uh, accrued? Were they, I mean, if, did we spend that much on subs? Or where does the forty-five thousand dollars come from?
I, I talked to Jewel today and Dr. Watson, you can certainly jump in here. You know, some of the people that took the COVID leave, um, needed subs. And so I, I, I would expect that that's where it came from. We, we would, we would have paid them anyway, but they don't all get subs. And so I, I, I think it comes from subs. But Dr. Watson, is there anything I'm not thinking of?
No, I, I think it would be totally, uh, directly related to the substitute cost. I don't know where shared calculations were, but I'm sure it was the substitute costs.
Yeah, because, I mean, other than subs, we technically don't have a cost. Yeah, because I mean, other than subs, we technically don't have a cost.
Right.
That, you know, when someone's off, we don't have, there's no cost associated with that other than the subs, so.
Right.
You know, I think I agree with you. I can't imagine, especially with the vaccine coming out. And the fact that we're probably not going to, even if we do have a lot of people out, we're not going to be able to fill them all with subs. So I can't imagine that the cost would be any greater next semester than it is this and probably less.
Yeah, I'm thinking probably less.
But I I did have another question, and this just goes back to bus drivers. How many hours a day do we pay bus drivers?
Um, Cal or Tara, would you like to? I want to, I I think I know that.
Part-time drivers are four hours, full-time drivers are six hours, we pay them.
Correct.
And then what does what does the state of Tennessee and the federal government, is it thirty-five hours full-time? Or does it have to go to forty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
I don't know.
Part-time is anything under thirty.
Yes.
Okay, so. How many of how many full-time drivers do we have?
Cal, how many do we have?
We've got about currently right now, we got about nineteen.
Okay, out of out of a total of what?
Fifty-seven.
Good.
And we got about twenty that work in schools, so.
So those that work in schools would already be covered by this anyway, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I I think we definitely, we need to cover everyone.
So that that's about eighteen eighteen drivers that are part-time. I think so too.
Yeah, I think we need to cover everybody across the board regardless. Anyway, I I was just interested to know. I thought thirty-five hours was full-time and I thought we we had most of our drivers on six hours a day is what I thought, but.
Christina.
I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if someone typically worked five, four-hour days. Then under the leave, the COVID twenty-one leave, if they were out for two weeks, they would get four hours. At ten days, that would be how their rate would be calculated. If they work typically. Six-hour days and they have five days in a week as a bus driver perhaps, then they would get that for the two weeks. If they were a teacher, they would get their teacher pay, which is five days a week, they would get that for two weeks. But if they were, you know, I don't know, we, there's the potential with part-time employees that maybe. In some department somewhere, somebody works Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They don't work Tuesday, Thursdays because they're part-time, they have the freedom and liberty to be employed elsewhere or stay home. And so if they took this leave because they were under quarantine or sick. Then they would get what would otherwise be their standard pay of. Say in that situation, they would get their Monday, Wednesday, Friday for those two weeks, or if they had worked Monday. And then before they were set to report on Wednesday, they started having symptoms and sought medical diagnosis. Then they would get the standard pay for the Monday and then the leave pay would take care of Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Potentially at that point, that Monday pickup, because that would pick up their others. They want it get ten days strung out. It would get within the two-day, the two-week period. So if their week is five days or one day or four days, it doesn't matter. I think we should cover everybody. I come from an industry where, unlike myself, most people are not full-time employees. So I've for nearly twenty years worked in an industry where everyone's benefits are based on just what their standard schedule is. Whether they're under thirty hours. Or full-time with more than thirty hours. So I'm fully comfortable with extending it district-wide. Personally, I used the FF-CRA through my employer because I had to get tested. And was out on quarantine. I didn't know how it would work out, but it was very beneficial to my family. Not just have a complete loss of income. So I support it for our faculty and staff, the entire district-wide.
Great. Thank you, Christina. I just had a couple of questions. So, Dr. Beck, you were talking about, they suggested we we just call this COVID. Don't refer to it as FF-CRA in any way in terms of policy, just call it COVID twenty-one policy. But we still make reference to COVID nineteen. Are we okay with that? Making reference to COVID nineteen within the policy or?
I can change, I can certainly change the name of to cut from COVID twenty-one to something else. In fact, Wendy or Dr. Watson, is there any, were there any other suggestions of something else to call it besides COVID twenty-one?
Uh, no.
No, they said you could call it whatever you wanted to. We just could not refer to it as the FF-CRA. Leave Act. It could be anything.
Okay, I I mean, personally, I think I like COVID nineteen policy better. I mean, why complicate matters? Alan, I know you were raising your hand, you might have a input for.
I was, you beat me to it, Mr. Reiser. I was going to say. There's technically speaking, there's no such thing as COVID twenty-one. COVID nineteen is a reference to the actual. Disease for which this policy is applicable, that in and of itself is separate from the FF-CRA. COVID twenty-one is just an invention. There's no such thing in 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 the world, actually. So I would recommend you just call it the COVID nineteen policy, and I think it's in the second paragraph, it's references COVID twenty-one. I I would change it there as well.
Okay.
And I believe there, I think the reason they suggested twenty-one was because it was in that fiscal year, but we can change that to COVID nineteen policy. I'm making a note of that right now.
Yeah, God forbid we actually get something that gets called COVID twenty-one.
Don't say that, don't say that.
No, don't say that. Christina.
I mean, why not consider calling it? Like a. Pandemic paycheck paycheck. Like, I mean, it could be a pandemic paycheck policy and it already has its own sunset date. So that it stays within this fiscal year. The remainder of our twenty, January one of twenty-one until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, but. I mean, we could, I I would hope we don't, but the World Health Organization is discussing the. Potential and readiness that we should be having for further pandemic. I would hope we don't get one within the next six months. But having it a more broadly-based name and then referencing COVID nineteen. Or in light of the ongoing pandemic of COVID nineteen in it, it would make it just. It would take out some of that confusion with the COVID twenty-one. Gives it some. You know, pandemic paycheck protection. I don't know.
You legally speaking, you can name it whatever you like. I was just suggesting that we may not want to name it after something that doesn't exist, but that suggestion's fine. You can just call it. You know, Chedon County Board of Education. Twenty twenty-one pandemic policy, if we want to keep that number in there, because you're right, the the operative language is under the paid sick leave heading. We're only providing paid sick leave for things related to COVID nineteen. So as long as the title isn't confusing, you can call it whatever you want.
That would be my only concern, and I I see what Ms. Gillian's saying, but that would be my only concern because, you know, just. Such that if there's another strain that comes out and it gets named COVID twenty or something and it's, you know, I I just rather take it on a case-by-case basis, just.
But we'll do one pandemic at a time.
Yeah, exactly, because if something else happens, even though it doesn't reach the level of a pandemic, and I know there's even debate. Is this a pain? We use the word pandemic. I know there's debate about, is it really an epidemic versus a pandemic in the in the? That gets into a medical definition, a legal definition, et cetera. So. I I would, I mean, personally, I I think I would feel more comfortable just sticking with COVID nineteen. We know what that is. We know what it's referencing. We know that there's testing specifically for that, et cetera, and I think that would just eliminate all all confusion. Because it is going to expire at the end of this fiscal year anyway, so. If something else came along or we had to revisit this, hopefully not come fall, then we'll we'll do it at that time and under those circumstances. James.
Um, I I was just going to add in COVID nineteen, twenty twenty-one plan. Just keep it simple. It it identifies the it identifies the virus as COVID nineteen, twenty twenty-one is the year that we're in. That that just keeps it really simple right there, in my opinion. Otherwise, what you were saying, David, sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, um, yes, Ms. Wendy.
When I spoke with TSBA today and talking with Ms. Warren, we were discussing. The descriptor term as far as what Chedon County was going to be deciding, and we also discussed that descriptor code. And she said it was very important to keep that same five-point-three-zero-five-one descriptor code. So that employees would know that we're not following FF-CRA from the. Beginning of August to December thirty-first, that we are still keeping some of those. Policies and procedures in place. We are just continuing in it with Chedon County's policies. From January first till the end of the school year. So she said, you know, we we should not change the descriptor code because. Employees are familiar with looking at this policy in our online board policies. And so we definitely should not change the descriptor code, the number. But to make it our descriptor term. One where they're able to find it easily and they know where this policy is located.
Alan.
Not to add another legal wrinkle, but I want to make sure I understood what Ms. Cox just said, something she said, I think it's just an aside. If we are, if we still intend to follow any part of the existing five-point-three-zero-five-one policy, the current FF-CRA policy. Then we need to address that policy also because it it's already expired. We're technically, we're not even following it now, and none of our employees can benefit from it presently. So if Ms. Cox, if what she's saying is that we're still using some of those same terms, or I think you said maybe policies or procedures. Then we would need to make sure that everything we're still using from that policy is repeated verbatim in this new one, in this new policy. If we intend this new policy to replace the old one.
Alan, what I did was is I, again, based on the advice in the webinar. The entire policy that's in there. Especially the number one, two, three, four, that was just copied and pasted. There are some things in the old policy that talk about FMLA and the advice of the webinar was. Take all that out, don't use any of that anymore. Um, so I'm not sure what I need to do in terms of obviously. You go ahead and and advise us on how to, mine was just a stab. It's something for you to look at tonight.
So two, two points I'll make. One, and and this is not critical, and I just want to make sure everyone that we're all on the same page. Actually, I think we just copied on on the new policy for paid sick leave. I think sections one through three are mirror the language of our current existing policy. Section four is actually a little bit different, just so I want to make sure everyone understands that if you're if you're looking at the old policy, number four in this new policy is different. It covers fewer people now.
What I added on that, what I I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. What I added on on number four. Was if you are taking care of somebody, it has to be somebody that lives with, it has to be somebody that lives within your house is what I added.
Second point, I I just want to make it again, it could just be, this could be fine. I I I I just want to make sure we understand that. Once we pass this new policy. Five-point-three-zero-five-one actually has already gone away, but especially if we're going to replace that section with this new policy. So if you all are comfortable that everything we need from the old policy is included into this one. Because remember, that policy originally went above and beyond the FF-CRA. This policy kind of does as well in a different way. Yeah, I I I'm just saying that I I understand why you didn't include that EFMLA language that was in the original policy. I just want to make sure that we can't use that old policy as a reference anymore. And I don't know if Ms. Cox or anyone on staff or even just our employees are still expecting that. Whatever policies or procedures we put in place for that old policy are going to continue. They'll only continue if they're in this new policy. Let me give you one example. As the way I read this new policy, if someone actually takes advantage of this paid sick leave. Then we need to pay them as we would someone receiving sick leave pay. Which my understanding is that might actually be a little bit different than the pay someone may have received under the FF-CRA.
No, if you remember, we paid a hundred percent of regular sick leave, which is what they make per day in the in our FF-CRA. So it that would not change. And so.
Right, it didn't. I I don't think it did under the EFMLA leave of the old policy, but I know it did for the uh. The compensatory leave under the old policy, so.
In my mind, the old policy is gone. It is no longer, it's sunsetted. It is, it's out of date. It is. And so this would be the new policy that we would follow completely.
Okay, I I agree a hundred percent that I'm just saying, I I'm only bringing this up because Ms. Cox. Made a reference to old policies and procedures under that sunset of policy. I'm saying those procedures are gone as well. If there's any procedure. You want to make sure that there's continuity with, that we continue to follow, my my legal advice would be put that procedure in this new policy. Because otherwise, if we have some employee that has a different expectation. Um, based on some old procedure that we say is now out of date. It's going to be much less of an argument with them. If we can say, well, no, look at the procedure in the new policy, here's where it's at. I understand the rationale of replacing the old policy in terms of where it appears in our. You know, our list of policies, because that's where employees are looking for that that information. But I I I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of anything that was done before. It's all the slate is entirely wiped clean, only what's in this new written policy that'll be applicable.
Now, Wendy, do we even have an administrative procedure written for this policy?
No, we do not.
No, and so that is right. I think I think Wendy was using those words, procedure and policy interchangeably, but.
Right.
That exactly what we intend to do is in this new policy and that we understand this is what is in effect right now. The old one's done. That's my, that's my understanding.
So Alan, basically, any motion then would need to say that we are replacing former. Policy five-point-three-zero-five-one with this policy.
Correct. My recommendation for any motion is three things. That, what you just said, that you were placing. Five-point-three-zero-five-one with this new language. Second, that you change whatever title you want to give it, you change any reference of COVID twenty-one to COVID nineteen. Because that's really what we're talking about. And third, if you all want this to apply to all employees, including part-time. Just delete the the full-time reference in the last paragraph.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, with that being said, would someone like to take a stab at making a motion on? This item pursuant to recommendations from our council? Okay, I'm I'll make the stab. All right, I make a motion and move that the. Board of Education adopt a new policy five-point-three-zero-five-one. In replacement of our previous policy, five-point-three-zero-five-one. Entitled. COVID nineteen. And any reference to COVID twenty-one in the proposed policy be changed to COVID nineteen. And further that all that the policy be applicable to all Chedon County. School district employees, not just full-time Chedon County School District employees.
Fuck.
All right, we have a second, but Mr. Ray. Oh, Mr. Gupkin, I'm sorry. You guys sound alike when I'm not looking at you.
We almost look alike.
We're both handsome.
Don't tell him, don't tell him. Don't tell him, don't tell him I said that.
All right, any further discussion on my motion? And Mr. Woods, let me know if I did not phrase any of that correctly for the record.
I I think that was perfect.
Okay, great. All right, hearing none, we got a first and a second. Uh, Ms. Cindy, uh, I see you're still with us. If you will take a roll call on that, please.
Sure. Lou Allen?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Gutten?
Yes.
Dick Shas?
All right, that motion carries unanimously. All right, I think that takes care of that item. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. Um, any general, kind of open it up for any general comments before we seek a motion to adjourn from board members or Dr. Beck?
I would say thank y'all for being willing to do a special call, Board Mini. I, we felt like these two issues were important and, um, that they really couldn't wait until the end of the month at the retreat or February. So I appreciate y'all's time, Alan, and the supervisors that are on as well. And, uh, yeah, y'all are amazing. We appreciate you all so much.
Well, as, as all board members have said, and I'll, I'll certainly, um, back it up. That we, we want to take care of our employees, all employees of the school district. And, um, this is just a, one of the many small ways that we can, we can accomplish that. So I I think, uh, certainly we are all in support of that and feel good about that decision. Uh, I will just give you a reminder, uh, as Dr. Beck, some of you may have heard, was asking me about it. I reviewed the agenda for the, um, retreat coming up on the twenty-third. Uh, I'm going to do that, so be looking for, I guess, the formal agenda to be published and circulated to you. Uh, again, as a reminder, that's on, uh, Saturday, January twenty-third. Yeah, so make sure, Saturday, January twenty-third, and we will begin at eight-thirty at the Burns Park Activity Center in Kingston Springs. Breakfast at eight-thirty, and then our agenda will start at nine o'clock. So, uh, if I don't speak to any of you before then, have a good, uh, have a good, uh, next couple of weeks, and, uh, we'll hopefully get a lot done and, and, uh, and and learn a little bit along the way on the twenty-third. Anything further? All right, chaired interrogation, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stay healthy.
Hopefully, John.
All right, Mr. Patrick, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ray, all right, we are.